Since this is a very democratic community and takes suggestions, we have changed our agenda for tonight. We will do the athletic presentations first and then he will go into our full sessions after the athletic presentation, so we only continue to you anymore.
Thank you.
Don't thank me, thank Mr. Pyro and Mr. Wood. Thank you. Flag in the chapter 231 of the law of 1975 entitled Open Public Meeting Act. I have the notice of this meeting as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun and Star Ledger, the North Jersey Herald News and Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Court, advertised on the Nutley Sun and Star Ledger on Johnny, I'm kidding, Nutley Sun and Star Ledger, posted on a district website. This is an official meeting. Have the flags up, please.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Palzama?
Here.
Mr. Corniselle?
Here.
Mrs. Dinchard Morton?
Here.
Mr. Burrell?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Flair?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
And now turn this portion of our presentation over to Mr. Pyro. Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a great pleasure out here tonight. Thank you all for coming. I congratulate everybody on a great year that students, parents, athletes, all our shareholders. It's been a fantastic year, one of the best we've had in my tenure as an A.D., and I'm proud to say that. This probably was one of the most successful years we've had as an A.D. here, not only the things that we've done on the field, but some of the things that we've done in the classroom. We've never had a higher cumulative GPA as an entire athletic department than we've had this year. We've never had as many community service hours as an athletic department than we've had this year. And I really credit our student-athletes. It's been a great bunch, from seniors right on down to the freshmen. They've been a pleasure to work with. I'm gonna hate to see the senior class go. It has been one of my favorites that have come down the line. I wish them all the best of luck as they move on to bigger and better things. We're gonna present our S.E.C. All-Conference Awards today. We have two teams that we are gonna honor for an All-Conference Championship, and I believe both of those teams are two years in a row. So, we're getting better and better every year. I'd like to bring Coach Brandon up as the head golf coach and... Can we have the golf team come on up, please? Golf is another big thing. First team Liberty Division, S.E.C. All-Conference, Michael Purcell. Second Team Liberty Division, All-S.E.C., John Sabatics. An honorable mention, S.E.C. Liberty Division, Jacob Mike. I'll bring Coach Ryan up to help present the Spring Track Awards. Representing Boys and Girls Spring Track, First Team for the Boys, L.I.C.C., Matt DeSilva. Your parents want to get pictures, you're certainly gonna have to take your pictures. Second Team, Giancarlo Padilla. Honorable mention, S.E.C., Louis Long. Representing the Girls' First Team, Chloe Jelly. Second Team, Taylor Small. An honorable mention, Jenna Moreno. Congratulations, buddy, grab your cameras if you can get a couple of pictures. The baseball staff right now is actually coaching a junior, sophomore, freshman All-Star team, so I will stand in as the baseball staff today. And representing All-Conference S.E.C. First Team, also broke the school hit record for Nutley High School with 140 hits. The record was originally 120, it was 144, Anthony Cadino. Second Team, Andrew Connor. Second Team, John Lawton. Also Second Team, but not here tonight because he's playing at All-Star game, is Marty Higginson. First Team, All-Conference Honors, Brianna DeMayo. Also First Team, Stephanie Zimer. Second Team, All-Conference, Samantha Etcheverria. Second Team, S.E.C., Danielle Pomponio. An honorable mention, Honors Go to Alanis Concepcion. On the Cross Team, First Team, All-Conference, New Jersey English Classical Crossman, Brian Hewitt. Second Team Honors, Brendan McCormick. Second Team Honor, Zach Vaughn. Also Second Team, Nicholas Ender. Finally, our Boys Tennis Team, and I wanna preface this because I think this is a great story. Our Boys Tennis numbers were low. We had a couple of senior athletes, football players, basketball players, soccer players that came to me and said, "We wanna learn how to play tennis. Can we go out for the JV team?" And we needed the numbers, so I said, "Sure, no problem." Well, next thing you know, they're playing against Norton Academy and Miss Scotty Corbin beating them. So, not only, it was to hear Ms. Moore tell the story, she was the first time we ever had lots of fans at tennis matches. And it was a great thing for our program. We built that program up. I wanna thank these guys for coming out and having fun. Tennis is a life sport, so they're able to bring that with them. So, I wanna bring up the entire team who won their second in a row S.E.C. Liberty Division Championship, so come on. First Team, Tomasi Daniele. First Team, Ahmed Ashma. Also First Team, Jonathan Lee. And Second Team Doubles, Jeffrey Bevere and August Starbuck. Was there any of the students leaving or coming back, or we're all good?
I texted, we were good.
Okay. All right, again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I'd really like to thank the people behind me because they are our support and they get us moving in the right direction. Ms. James signs all the checks to make sure we have everything we need. Thank you, Ms. James. Mr. Lazovic, Ms. Valani, Ms. Valani here. I wish you guys all the best in your future endeavors. Thank you for being such big fans of Nutley High School Athletic Department. A personal note, I think that over the last five years, I've really grown as an athletic administrator and I got Mr. Lazovic to thank for that. So personally and publicly, I'd like to thank him for mentoring me and doing all the things that he's done for me to make me better. Because when I'm better, our coaches are better, our programs are better, and your kids get a better experience. Have a great summer, healthy, safe, and most importantly, relaxing. Enjoy the rest of your year. First Team All-Liberty Division Golf, Anthony Casanova. Common language, common vision, and image. I know this.
Required by code, presentations on both super teams of gold and chapters, you line up with another requirement, which is presentations on our evaluation system and our student performance. As far as our evaluation system, this has been five years in the running, but growth, learning, and accountability, in that order, all three critical pieces, but we're focused on teacher growth. We had another success this year based on staff feedback. Again, studying Danielson, who wrote the framework that we use as approved by the state, but the idea is we cannot have meaningful conversations as a district, even person-to-person, unless we have a consistent language that is commonly understood. The state came in to evaluate us again, as we have every year. We meet with teachers at the end of the year and we've modified our evaluation process. We were not being compliant with T-N-J and T-V-J again. You've seen this slide before, but the idea is that we connect our evaluations one to the next and teachers don't have standalone experiences, but are truly focused on their growth throughout the course of the year, getting feedback from multiple administrators, and reflecting, a big purple arrow, omnibus practice as much as possible. We took a big step this year, moving to what we call the two-by-two evaluation, where teachers who had proven for two years in a row to be effective or distinguished, that we wanted to drive that own process. We want them to be in charge of their learning, tell us what their goal should be, what we should be looking for in their class. Basically, when you have a great teacher, you want that teacher to be thinking about his or her practice and saying to us, "This is where you can help them." So as we came in with our time, we were more focused and more specific to truly support teachers who were excelling with exactly what they, within their practice, they're looking for assistance with. As always, we have all different components in place as far as our professional development. A great, good portion, I wanna thank all of our administrators and teachers. A good portion of our professional development now is being run by our own staff. We have peers, training peers, colleagues, training colleagues. Again, feedback from the state, again, always proud of this, but these kinds of quotations have the good fortune of working with all of you and have the great deal of respect for your efforts. That's the state representative talking to members of teachers, administrators, and central office administrators. I was particularly impressed with the consistency, transparency, and reach of your communication structure. You can always get better at communicating. And what's really interesting to me is that as we've communicated these things, the cracks become even more apparent. The more specific you are, the easier it is to find out where you're not. And we have teachers doing a good job of letting us know, "This doesn't make sense, I got two different streams of information." One of my big pieces at the very end, this year we were selected as a district partner as the state works to develop a common tool for administrative evaluations. And so, Mr. Francia, Ms. Egan, Dr. Valani, no, listen, Dr. Val, sorry.
Mr. Odell.
Mr. Odell, principal, vice-principal, and coordinator, all chosen to be part of a large state committee that's met three times at this point, I believe one more time before the end of the school year, and then going to summer. Their goal is by September of 2017 to have a working pilot that districts can use for their administrative evaluations. As always, just examples, this is previous data, so I don't, never use real-time data, but we actually take our numbers and put them in the same system we use for student performance so that we can analyze the data, see where our teachers are doing well, see where we determine, as kind of our lens is focused on ourselves, self-reflection, where we need to focus our work for the next year. That information goes to the LPDC, which is a group of teachers and administrators who help plan professional development. We also share in the summer with our skip teams, which are leadership teams in every building. Are there any questions on the evaluation system? Common vision, a little longer, but our mission, our vision, last time I get to do this, we got together, spring 2012, 65 people, and put together our value statement, mission, vision. What's interesting about this, again, and I keep coming back to this, the vision is a thing we'll come back to. Having a strategic plan is something that most school districts have, multiple school districts have for at least 10 to 12 years. The big issue, as we talked about when we built ours, is that all the research shows that most school districts never achieve their strategic plan. Okay, there's been a lot of talk about five-year plans don't make sense, have a one-year plan. Again, what all the research shows is that you have to have both. A strategic plan is at minimum a five-year plan, looking out so that you have vision, but that you have to have short-term goals and action areas, and they have to be ranked and prioritized in order for a district to be successful. We did our normal work again, our six action teams moving into the fourth year of their work, skip through these pieces. The idea being that we started with research, we moved through drafts and piloting, targeted implementation, staff development, and the rest, and that this year we were trying to expand as much as possible. Each of our six action teams is at a different point in this evolution, depending on how things were prioritized and how ready this district was for those individual pieces. Again, our action teams, character, communication, community competency, configuration, curriculum, all six of those, yes, they start letter C, but the point was, those came out of the strategic work, starting with our values and our vision statement, which is a statement of what we want to be, not what we are. These six ideas came, we tapped each of these separately and in an integrated fashion, that we eventually realized the vision and become the district we were hoping to be five years ago. These committees presented to either the academic or the administrative committees. Character, the whole point of the character committee, their focus was, districts making informed decisions based on an individual code of ethics, code of morals, code of values that they are aware of and are constantly self-reassessing. This year, they were conducting training and modeling lessons, which they did for selected staff, which included administrators. As they move into year five now, it becomes a question of how broadly we can expand the program. Communication, this has been ongoing right from the get-go, starting on their website. For year four, they want to utilize the results of the parent communication survey. We did a survey in year three, got a ton of data that informed us on how parents felt they were when they were receiving information. Because of this, we changed our parent academies, we modified how we were communicating with school messenger and nubians, and we changed our schedule of presentations through the course of the year to better align with what parents needed to know when. This, obviously, a big example of this will be included from last year to this year to change the elementary report card and how we shift it to standard-based and inform parents about that, and not just about the report itself, but how to use real-time as a parent and go into the parent portal and for students, the student portal at the secondary level. And now moving forward, they want to build that same survey. There's still a lot of data that we still have to mine, but we can move forward. Community piece, this was not, this action team's goal, again, as I say every time, is not to get the community into schools, but rather to get the learning of our students outside of the school walls into the community. Look at the outdoor classrooms that we're going to get and the work of even Mr. Pyro and the community service pieces, all those have been pulled in. We had, this action team had built a toolkit previous year. This year, what they're doing is applying that toolkit to specific teacher projects that already exist. There was a small number, they were successful, but again, their projects that the teachers have been doing, that we're now using the toolkit to structure. Their goal moving forward is to create more awareness from the teachers of this toolkit because as they're doing things, it enhances how you get the learning beyond the four walls of the classroom. Competency, those skills that make successful people successful regardless of content. This year again, they've been moving fairly quickly, but they want to infuse this through the entire Health and Physical Education Program, K-12, and extend it in pieces to specific disciplines. They also assess the competencies, and you'll find a number of those now on the elementary report card and discuss it at parent conferences at the middle school. Year five again, what we look to do is expand it step by step with teachers who are prepared to handle it. The nice piece was, at the elementary level, we got them out of Big Push because we put them on the report card, so everyone needed to talk about that. The most important thing is we get teachers using these, is that initially it seems like something else they have to do. When actually, most teachers right away recognize when we spend two minutes with them, that these are things in their classroom already, and the important piece is we have to talk about with the kids, otherwise the learning goes untapped. Configuration, three different action teams, all within one action team, elementary, middle, and high school. The elementary, I'm happy to report as of today, has posted our elementary handbook. Not only are we in compliance, but we have a first consistent piece. It is on every single elementary webpage as an article. It will be moved to our left-hand navigation as a resource. It will be put onto the web as an actual webpage itself. Right now it's a document, which will include live links and the rest. Not only does this guarantee that all five of our buildings are working off of the same material, but as we update things ongoing, whether there are policy changes or board changes or the rest, we change them in one spot and all five buildings, all parents looking have access to the exact same information. Middle School, congratulations, middle school teachers, Ms. Egan, Mr. Sullivan. Middle school, congratulate the middle school teachers, Ms. Egan, Mr. Sullivan, the counselors, Mr. Capella. As you know, they've been working through the middle school model, it's a huge and significant change at the core of our district. The kids are going through the greatest amount of change personally, socially, physically. Structuring the school around them, allowing our teachers to focus each and every day as a team on the kids that are their charge makes a huge difference. And I know moving forward, one of the things, we started using more data, we've really stepped up the advisory program, but with the goal again being for the advisor to eventually take over that based on his or her advices. At the high school, we continue to train things, the board, we help these new teachers out, we also brought teachers from other districts in. We ran a number of professional development sessions, both at faculty meetings and at our large PD days, to get our teachers prepped and ready to move to block teaching, which again, is a significant difference when you go from, when you're adding fifty percent of your time to the class, having to get the kids engaged and made in full way. Year five, on those pieces, building through the middle school model, fleshing out the elementary handbook, and with the high school, vibration, the board truly preparing staff-wise to shift the next year, dropping an extra launch, and looking what happens as we test the middle school, the, sorry, the high school block schedule, when we have our testing list, so that they're prepared. Last one, curriculum, biggest one on my mind. Every single academic change that has happened since 2011, twelve, has been driven by this action team. Mr. Mityer is here, no problem publicly congratulating him and thanking him, and Mrs. LaGuardia as well, I know your third person has changed, correct? But the two stalwart members of that committee have spent hundreds of hours over the past four years building the process. And while I think the actual changes to our academic program are incredible and are already showing results with our students, which is, which is a big deal for that to happen that quickly, the important part of this action team are not the specific changes, but rather the process. When I came in 2011, twelve, everyone from board members to teachers to parents, et cetera, were all screaming about our academic programs and some of them needing to be energized, revitalized, or caught up. Following this process moving forward, it's a mapped-out five-year process, God, I did a great job managing that calendar, but if we follow that process moving forward, we should never, as a district, find ourselves in a spot where we are not cutting-edge in any of our programs. So again, congratulations, and thanks to them. I want to point out a couple things, I shared an article with board members, I want to say about two months ago, in brief, called the Harvard Business School and District Management Council, which is a national organization that specializes in helping institutions, whether it's academic or professional, plan strategically and actually meet those goals. What's interesting is they published an updated article of what they thought strategic planning should be now. This just happened two months ago. What they feel strategic planning should be, and these are the experts, is exactly what, in a map that I've given board members before, exactly what we had done in 2012. And so I felt that was a big deal. We have to have a board, and our vision, our work has to focus on a vision. What is, what is it that we strive to be? And I want to jump back to that. Our structure is different from board to our actual configuration, if you look at how we operate. Those processes have all been reviewed. Those that are the same are the same because after our review, we found them to be functioning efficiently and effectively, and when they weren't, we made changes through a process. Our resources, I don't have to go through it again, but if you look in the classrooms, they look dramatically different. Teachers asking for materials, we have technology throughout, and when I say resources, I also mean the facilities themselves and the staff members. We've grown staff where it's necessary. Our child study, our special education program, our world languages, okay, continue to support the arts differently. When you walk into high school and you see computers in every possible classroom, that is a huge change that came out of our strategic plan. Communication with stakeholders, everyone is always telling us we can communicate better, but everywhere we go, Mr. Kuzinski and I doing our tour of the elementary schools, you know, Ms. Russo, Mr. Conso, and Mr. Kuzinski and I working with PT Council, everyone still says we are dramatically improving in terms of our communication. Can't be better, always, but they're thrilled at, between Twitter, Facebook, the website, school messenger, Naveans, they understand exactly when the information should be coming to them and when they have to go get it. And then finally, instruction. Our instruction is radically different depending on what level, what area you look at from 2010, eleven to today. That has come through a collaborative process with our staff members, driven by our strategic plan. If I go back to our vision, vision, vision statements are difficult to write if you write them effectively, because they are you publicly putting on paper, out for everyone to read, exactly where it is you think you are not doing well currently, so that you said it as a vision, because it's what you want to be doing well at the end. When we talk sustainable, when we talk about our budget to start with, we're in a vastly different place than you, Ms. Jamins and the board, as to where our budget was in 2010, eleven, as to where it was today, what we've been able to purchase, what investments we've been able to make, what we actually have, and we have done all of that under the wizardry of Ms. Jamins, within the two percent cap, not going alone. I think that's an incredible piece, sustainable, making sure we have the appropriate positions. We have not, through the strategic plan, jumped at any one thing, added too many staff members, or too many resources at one time, but tried to balance the professional development with the expense, rotating through things through a five-year process, so that everything is always moving, but moving in a way where one thing is never taking over for something else. Integrated, we've got administrators K-12, we've got them going into every content area. We have teachers talking not only to their grade-level peers, to their content peers, but to other teachers, which makes our professional development when it comes to efficiency. Just the addition of technology alone, while we still have always room for improvement, and Mr. Vemeister is here, he was far ahead of what we needed before we needed, and hopefully we will stay that way. When we had to add a ton of technology just to catch up, and then we forward over most districts, our network were ready, our training and our techs were ready. When we first had to roll out statewide assessments using technology, thankfully, did not hear any issues from here, okay, as a district. This year, the park system had a problem, and went down unexpectedly during testing. Was it an issue for us? Yes, if you compare our issue, which was, okay, let's get back to instruction, versus other districts, which literally shut down for the day. I think you can talk about our staff, but also about how efficient we were in training and planning, to make sure when some of that happens, we move right ahead, didn't have to change any of our schedule. Innovative, coming from the students first, we look at our straight plan, our library project, that was student-based, we look at revised, that was a push from students. We talk about the things that are happening in the classroom that comes from our teachers, and those supported by our administrators, and obviously, even as a board, we're constantly looking to see how we can interact more innovatively. And my big piece, we have some, we've dealt with a number of challenges, there are some significant challenges coming up facing the township and the district. And again, part of our vision statement was to make sure that we, as a district, weren't just the largest employer in town, but we were the unifying and driving force in our community's work for the community, not just the students. I think there are dozens of examples that you can find, in the way we communicate and what we've done within the community, and how we communicate what we're doing in our schools with the community, that has brought this community closer together under this board and the board. Questions? Before I close, five-year plan, next year is year five, you walk with the six action teams, that means you should be looking, as a board, for in December, which is when we started, getting the word out and getting your team together to start in January. It was Dr. Larrera that helped us walk through the process successfully five years ago. I just pointed it out because he was consistent. Picture, I know he's more than willing, but there are other places as well, I know Dr. Glaser's going to come in and give you her version, which is how she'll move forward. The important part is remember that this expires on our website and everything else in June twenty-seventh. We want to make sure we plan before that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. I personally want to thank you for the work you've done on that, and your group, certainly with that elementary handbook, I think it's something we've needed for a while, you all find, there's all five schools on the same page, and I appreciate your team doing that.
Thanks, and I thank all, like you said, the team, everyone putting their teams together and working together.
Information on student data?
Oh, the student data report, it's very simple, it's put to the board. We haven't student data as of yet, we were told we were going to, we don't. So when the state issues student data, Dr. Pizer will receive it, and I'm going to have the pleasure of reporting out, I know AP within three weeks, we should have our advanced placement, of course.
SAT in August part, they aren't closing the testing until this Friday, so I don't expect to have it, so.
They had told us July, but I agree with Dr. Glaser, we're not going to see it for a second. That would include the teacher scores and everything else coming out in ways that they have to back. So prior to June, our presentation, we're going to state these data, we can present.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. James.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's finance agenda is rather extensive, we have about fifty-six resolutions. They incorporate numerous contract renewals that we utilize in the district for educational software. Technology purchases, the district is going to be purchasing several math books, projectors, Chromebooks, and PIES. Curriculum materials, administrative software, renewing things such as our speaking information system, our accounting software, and software licensing agreements. The agenda also includes a ward of contracts to repair and replace outside steps at Washington School, install new fire doors and auditorium at Lincoln School, refinish the hood floors and all the gyms at auditoriums in every school, we do annually, and the next phase of redoing the wood floors, which is going to be at Spring Garden School, which will take us full circle to doing that project for every single elementary school. And also on the agenda is the resolution to improve all the extended school initiatives for added district reasons. I'd just like to express, you know, a special thanking to Mrs. Kucua, she is relentless and has been for the last two weeks, and contacting both vendors and staff to ensure that all of these resolutions make it to tonight's agenda, and so that we have a smooth transition from one school year into the next. So, Mrs. Kucua, we could not get us together tonight without all of your hard work.
Yes, thank you very much, Ma'am. We appreciate the hard work that you do.
This is my last superintention report, Mr. Ginn. So, I think.
It will be brief.
It will be briefer than all yours combined, but yeah, this is my last shot, so there were a few things I did want to say, and I thank the fortunate adults. When I began here in the summer of 2011, my daughters, Martha and Samantha, were ages five and two. My family and I were just beginning our own journey through school, with my oldest beginning kindergarten, that's September. Now, five years later, my oldest is ending fourth grade, and my youngest is finishing first. They have grown and changed in more ways than I could possibly count, and I've been fortunate and amazed to have watched them. I look at our school district and much the same way. Over the past five years, this township and this district have undergone a massive amount of change, which is never easy. However, in 2012, we came together as a school community, developed ambitious goals, and since that time, have committed ourselves to reaching those goals. The work has been challenging, but we have been successful because above else, above all else, I believe, we have worked as a team. I want to thank the board members. Mr. Cook, I was not planning for you to be here, but thank you very much for coming out. All the board members, from those who hired me, to those who are sitting at the table right now. Throughout my time here, you have been passionate, committed contributors, asking questions, studying data, oftentimes under a great deal of time constraints, hearing from our various stakeholders, and never shirking off the difficult decisions. It has been your oversight and plan in a manner of possible, you've impacted all aspects of our work, the work that we have done, and I am grateful for your partnership. Our accomplishments at every level are your compliments. I did want to take a second to thank Josiah, partly because it will never truly be understood by anyone else, but over the past five years, we've been stalwart support of everything that we have been doing. He has done everything in his power to ensure that this district succeeded beyond him, and he has never asked me personally for anything in return. I am grateful for his counsel, his support, and his understanding, and I felt he needed to be recognized. Mrs. Jamins, Mrs. Kucua, and the women of the business office, including Mr. Memorial, have, over the past five years, produced budgets, and I believe this is something to be applauded, that each year were evaluated by our external auditors as the most efficient and responsible that they had seen in more than a decade and a half. These budgets, struggling against exponential growth of factors beyond the district's control, never grew beyond the state's mandated cap, ensured responsible use of our residence tax dollars, while guaranteeing that the staff and resources we need to move forward were always available. You've all done incredible work, thank you. I am personally indebted to Mrs. Mulligan, Mrs. Alessio, Mrs. Merritt, and Ms. Counsel. This small group of phenomenal women have handled every single issue that we have encountered. They know the procedures and processes that improve our efficiency and effectiveness, they support the entire district each and every day, and they always did it with a smile. Dr. Valani, you joined our work in September of 2011, and we could not have known then how integral you would be to our growth. Not only are you able to manage the district on your own, please don't tell anyone, oh, I got my evaluations, okay, they can know now. But you spearheaded our academic work at every level, working with students and teachers in the classroom, with parents and community members in forums, and with administrators and board members from central office. You have impacted all that we have done across the district, and have my, forever my gratitude, and we deserve the same for this community. In comparison to other districts, our district employs a relatively small number of administrators. However, based on the work with those administrators over the past five years, you would think that we had twice as many as we actually do. This team of committed professionals has found endless energy and resolve to handle the required day-to-day responsibilities inherent in their jobs, while still finding time to transform the way we work and how we impact our students. Not one of them has ever limited his or her work to what was in their job description. Their leadership, across all buildings and all levels, has propelled this district forward, is an honor for me to call and call. To our teachers and support staff, this district owes you more than it could ever repent. I say that because I've seen you work for five years. I say thank you. These are the people, these are the ones working every day on our floor with our students. They have been consistent in their clamoring for improved process, new resources, and better collaboration. They are responsible for selecting and implementing the most important changes, those that impact the students directly. And they have done so brilliantly, as evidenced from the feedback of our students, from the feedback of our parents in the larger community, and certainly in no small part by the database successes of our students. I especially want to thank the leaders who arose from our ranks, those official and unofficial, those staff members who shared their voices at meetings and professional development sessions, as well as those who took positions of leadership. I'd like to thank Mr. Stoffers for his leadership early on in our process, helping us get off the ground. I want to thank Mr. Ciclatano for his character, for his compassion, and for his courage. I also want to thank Mrs. Christian Tello, who, over the course of five years, has worn more hats, and more than successfully, than any other person than we should ever ask for a single person. To each of you, and to all of our staff, who every day, every class period, every hallway conversation, take them as an opportunity to positively impact the lives of our students, I say thank you. I do want to speak to the parents and the guardians of our district, because they have played a crucial role. Through meetings and forums, emails, phone calls, and personal conversations, they have advocated for our students and support our work as true collaborators in our system. They expect the most from us, but as I have evidenced, they demonstrate their willingness to give as much, if not more, than they expect from our work. For that, I respect, and I thank them. To the students of Nothing, you are the reason we do all this. Over the past five years, you may, you may not even realize all the change that has been happening around you, from our academic and athletic programs to our character and competency work, but the adults around you here in Nothing, professional and personal, care about you and your growth. I personally owe you a great deal. My conversations with you in classrooms, auditoriums, gymnasiums, and on stage, and the fields of our competitions, have always left me energized. Thank you for being such wonderful individuals. To the larger community, from our local officials to business owners to township employees, including our police, fire, and emergency personnel, it has been a true honor to work side by side with you. The commitment of those who live and work in Nothing to their township as a whole is one that I wish every citizen everywhere had to their city, to their town, or to their neighborhood. Nothing is truly a special place, one that even though I built thirteen and a half miles away, I had no idea truly existed. Now I, now I understand. And while this is a choice I made for my family, I am saddened to be leaving. Over the past five years, with the work of everyone I've mentioned, I do not believe that there is an aspect of this district that is not better because of our efforts. Financially, the district is in the best shape it's been in. Academically, our classrooms now have cutting-edge technology, a wealth of instructional resources, and more effective measures to assess and support student learning, as well as continue to offer new and more diverse programs to support all of our students and their needs. We built the new high school model, we transitioned to a middle school with our support individual students. Athletically, we started for Mr. Pyro. We now focus our efforts in the classroom and on the court field to develop a whole child, supporting growth through competition and challenge by choice. Professionally, we are leveraging technology in the most efficient ways, providing new levels of professional development, and supporting individual growth through our education. We've made deep investments in our facilities and security systems, including technology and training, and have prepared our budget to support the operating needs of a modern school district, all while maintaining a community awareness of our responsibility to the test pairs in Nothing. Thank you to Mr. Megalec and Mr. Vemeister, always seeing into the future. Most importantly, while we've done all these things, we have put into place policies, processes, and systems which make all of these sustainable, and allow us to ensure that the district can continue to maintain cutting-edge environment appropriate for our students. From our website and multimedia web presence, to school messenger, Twitter, Facebook, and our parent student portals, a new means of communication now connect all of us, guaranteeing access to the information we need as individuals. This has all been achieved over the course of five short years, and during that time, key public measures of our district's success have continued to climb, from civic, art, academic, music, athletic arms, to scores on state assessments and advanced placement exams, to the growth, new opportunities for our students, and, talking with Mrs. DeVillio and Mr. Williams again, to more of our students earning acceptance into the most rigorous secondary programs in the country. Our students each year over the past five years... Our students, each year over the past five years, have found ways to surprise and astonish. All I have left to say is that Nutley's not done. We've just begun the work. There is a great future ahead, which I believe can be built upon a foundation that has been laid these past five years. I am honored to have been on the team during this time, to have played a role, and I thank everyone in which the district and the township of Nutley have absolutely blessed having you. Thank you.
Since we've been changing our whole agenda for tonight, we must go forward with this now on behalf of the Board of Education. I'd like to read this little momento and then everyone will have something to say they'd like to. Mr. Russell Laszlo, superintendent of school, with much appreciation for our dedication to the students and academic success of the Nutley School District, 2011-2016, I personally thank you very much for the children in Nutley, Delmar, that you have had here. I'm going to miss you.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Board members, we're looking to say something now. It's time to say something to Mr. Laszlo. If Ma will say something tonight at the dinner, I'm sure. It's going to be toast, not roast.
As you know, I'm not sure the words are on this. I just have to acknowledge that Russ, actually, the original board members that chimed in here tonight was Charlie and Debbie. And then Lisa and I came right into, just before he was appointed, from their interview process, which, well, we reviewed it and rightly said we thought it was tremendous and we were glad to support you. So I was honored to do that and thank Lisa and I and the board that was here before us that interviewed, did the right decision. I always think that I've met you multiple times over five years. It's always about education, music, and sports. Before you got here, we did have conflict between music and sports and kids giving up one for the other, coaches not working with music directors. You truly solve that and that just makes our district stronger and better. From your goals that were met tonight, from supporting everything that's gone on with the district, your vision that you brought through this, I thought was great. And I would like to thank you personally. And if you've never been in his office, the greatest thing that brought him this far is he's graduated from Disney University. As you know, which is close to my heart. But congratulations, Russ. Looking forward to the future. And I think that's still just one more stop in your chain of interboard members. So just thank you.
I think I would like to just very briefly thank you for the board briefs. Yes, I actually read your board briefs every week, including all the attachments, which really supported the information. So I appreciate that as a busy during the day and then putting on a board member hat at night helps to have those weekly reviews. I hope you carry that into the district to help those board members as well. I'd also like to thank you for your classroom, which your classroom sessions on the website, which if you haven't seen them, I encourage everyone to please look at because I think you did an excellent job breaking down some kind of complicated issues, graduation requirements, testing issues for all the stakeholders in our district. And I thank you for taking the time because I know you're much involved in everything else you have to do for the district and your family. You always have that updated and I hope you continue that as well. So thank you for your service.
Yeah, I'd like to just, actually, it's for Mr. Laszlo and also Dr. Valani, who is also leading us. Both of you have accomplished so much in the past five years. Just like Mr. Laszlo said, the strategic plan, we have a clear mission and a vision. We have updated curriculum, web-based report cards, electronic communication notification systems, coaches academy, we passed CUSAC. Our scores are going in the right direction. Both you and Dr. Valani have always made decisions based on what's best for the community, the district, and most importantly, the students in Nutley. Thank you for your service and both of you will be missed.
Russ, Gina, I really learned a lot from you guys. Your work ethic, your ability, what you do and what you say. Russ, you have to say it better than you do it. You do it well. Your ability to synthesize and be clear for all of us is great. You know, I am going to miss you both. Tremendous to be able to be in touch. And I wish you well.
Anyone else wish to say anything?
I'm going to say mine while I have this beautiful hand door box.
Also, unfortunately, leading us at the same time, I think it's kind of nice with setting our assistant superintendent, who has done an outstanding job, fully in for Russ when it was necessary and being here to help us and guide us with our curriculum and with our teachers. Again, I'm going to miss you. I appreciate the work you've done. Mr. Cornsel.
All right, so it looks like we got a little thing here for Gina Valani. Dr. Gina Valani. It does say doctor. Does that one say doctor?
No.
That's been an ongoing joke, by the way. I appreciate it. We always tease Mr. Laszlo. I know you're very close to him. He didn't use the word doctor.
It's right there.
So, with much appreciation for your dedication to the students and academic success of the Nutley School District. That's you.
Board members, can we continue with your accolades?
Yes, and what I wanted to say was I would say to you both. I wasn't expecting to be in a situation where we were going to lose two leaders in this district. But I also believe that, you know, perfect relationships, or good relationships, are those that both sides win. And I think that Nutley has been able to capture a lot of success and we have something to build on. And I also believe that where you're going, you're going to take some Nutley with you. And so I feel like the relationship between what we have here in Nutley with both of you is something that's going to not only continue to be built on here, but it's going to be well received even in the districts that you're going to. I thank you for your time. I know we all always get along. That's part of the relationship. You know, we have to be difficult at times and we always seem to come to unending making decisions and that's what's good about having and working with very good professionals. So I appreciate that and thank you.
So I'm just going to say to Gina...
You got a few words?
So I'm just going to say to Gina, I said, you know, Russ came in with his vision and the first thing he identified that he truly needs somebody for curriculum development. And that was one of his big goals. And of course, we interviewed you. You were tremendous. And I have to state that your tenacity in working through the curriculum is what, you know, you have to build a structure of a team that will succeed with you. And then a few years ago, you know, it came to us to bring you up to assistant superintendent. It was a big discussion, but the two of you really brewed the district together. You tremendously on the curriculum side and then more filling in in the background as the assistant superintendent. And with Russ, you're a great person. I hope you do well in the future. Again, I think another, where you're going is another stop along your long journey. But you are tremendous in education. I wish you well, Russ.
Anyone else wish to leave the conference? I know...
Try that.
I'm sorry, sure.
I was waiting for less. I just got both, Russ and Gina. I want to thank you for all your hard work and your sacrifice. And by that, I do mean sacrifice because you do spend a lot of time away from your family, being here for the betterment of our district and our children. And I want to thank you for, on behalf of the entire district, for that. And I also want to, just as Danny said, sometimes in this position, you agree and sometimes you disagree. But I want to thank you both for, when the times when we did disagree, we always left as friends. And so even though today we're saying goodbye to you as being, you know, part of our district, you're still leaving as our friends. So thank you for that.
I know there are some citizens that would like to say something. Might as well continue with our out-of-boarder order tonight. Someone wishing to help forward can do that.
Can we assemble the address or just talk?
We can just talk.
They're past present. Evaluating the town's school district is probably the most important thing and as a homeowner, it's certainly important protecting our asset. And five years ago, the district, the direction of the district, I don't think was in the right direction. And we faced a lot of challenges. And each of you knew we had, we thought we had the right guy and we did have the right guy. We faced those challenges. Change is always difficult. The district needed a sea change and all the things that you enumerated tonight had to get done. And it was through your leadership, your vision, your energy that that got accomplished. And so, thank you. Keep going.
Thank you.
Dr. Valani, it lucked you. Your contribution was tremendous in creating the curriculum along. And thank you.
Anyone else wish to say anything?
Charlie.
Yes.
Of course.
Good luck on that, Gina. I'm following you down to your district anyway.
Can help beat out the population?
Yes.
In the past five years, as a district, we've accomplished a great deal. And I'd first like to thank the U.S. board members, including past board members groups at the time that I served here, who support our accomplishments that we made were not impossible. We're fortunate in Nutley to have staff members who truly care about students and learning. Our teacher support and our support staff work tirelessly to make sure our students have the best education possible but that they also enjoy learning. I know the last five years have been trying at times and I know our teachers and our support staff have stepped up and worked hard for our students and for that, I'm grateful. Our teachers are supported by a solid administrative team. This group of administrators constantly goes above and beyond for our students and our staff. More than that, they help each other. I've never once heard an administrator say, "That's not my content," or "That's not my building." They work together. They ask questions of each other. They assist each other as needed to help move their programs and their instructional practices. I've never worked with a more dedicated team of administrators and I will miss each one of them. Thank you to Mrs. Jamins in the business office, staff who have helped us as we navigate our purchases, our expenditures related to curriculum and instruction, provide materials and professional development to our staff members. Closer to home, our team of secretaries in the superintendent's office, currently Mrs. Alessio, Mrs. Mara, and Ms. Counsel, and previously Mrs. Mulligan. I often say that I have three moms because each one is always asking me where I'm going, what I'm doing, and if I eat lunch. They're always on me. They look out for me, which I appreciate, but they also work so hard for the district. I'm grateful for their commitment to the district as well as their enthusiasm for all that we do. And finally, Mr. Laszlo. I believe that I've always been and will always be a lifelong learner. The amount of learning I've experienced in the last five years working with you has sort of had anything imaginable for me. I am forever indebted to the knowledge you have imparted to me, the trust you placed in me, and the freedom you gave me to take the ideas you had about instruction and practice and incorporate with them. I've always said that we're different in our approach to many things, but I believe those differences make us a dynamic team and I will truly miss working with you each day. My wish for the district personality is to continue to push forward. It has been truly become my second home and my second family here in Nutley. I want only what's best for the students and staff and I know you'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Mayor? Community reports.
General community reports, Mr. Carr.
I had a committee met on June 14th. And Mr. Minkler, Mr. Brown provided the committee with an update on various issues of product maintenance, labor and work orders. Mr. Minkler reviewed the upcoming security projects at Spring Garden and Nutley High School. He also reported on the summer projects to repair the management stairs at Washington School, the stucco repairs at Washington School, tree trimming in Spring Garden, paving a long blue drive, wood floor refurbishments and new fire doors for Lincoln School. Mrs. Yeamons provided an update on the current school year budget and end of year purchases. Mrs. Yeamons and Mr. Moore presented the June 20th finance resolutions, including transfers, use of facilities, technology purchases, substitute rates and contract renewals. And the committee discussed the bus lines, open requests and coordination of work to the safety of the school plans at Washington Schools to enhance the benefit district. And our next meeting is scheduled for July 19th.
Mr. Scholl, do you want to give the academic committee a report?
Yes, the academic committee met on June 13th. We had quite a few presentations. Dr. Vellani wants to fit everything in before she left, thankfully though. Our character action team went through their four-year review. Mr. Jones, Mr. Odell and Dr. Riley shared with the committee members the year four work of the character action team as well as their plans for year five goal activities. They specifically discussed ongoing professional development, including the meeting they had with coaches, a potential of a survey in the district for some feedback for the character action team. We also had a presentation from the configuration action team and where we discussed the elementary handbook, which we already discussed for us. Ms. Corolla and Ms. Vitello discussed with the committee members the creation of the elementary handbook. The handbook includes general information related to the elementary program. We had presentations, CTE accounting. Dr. Vellani shared with us information related to the finance and accounting textbook pilot. As of the materials piloted, one text was selected which included critical thinking skills, a variety of problem-solving activities and online component. Resolution is on the agenda for tonight. Dr. Riley presented to the committee members information related to the fine and forming arts program offerings and pilot process. Dr. Riley also discussed the teachers' work on curriculum and standards to align selected materials. Resolution is also on tonight's agenda. Mr. Odell presented to the committee members information related to social studies pilot. He discussed the move towards national studies, social studies standards and use of the C3 inquiry model. There is a resolution on the agenda to purchase textbook materials. I believe our materials are about 15 years old and really do need a significant upgrade. Additional presentations. Ms. Benavides and Ms. Vitello discussed with the committee the information related to the required state laws on select D including professional development and screening students. They discussed the need for screening tools as well as processes and procedures for staff members. Resolution is also on tonight's agenda regarding the purchase of the assessment kits. Ms. Powell shared with the committee members finance, fitness program data related to the physical education program. And she highlighted some of the decreases in aerobic capacity in our students from elementary to middle school. We also received an update on our flex academic support program. Ms. Powell discussed feedback with the committee members from the pilot of the flex program. She identified the feedback from faculty was positive and shared some very successful stories. Project Adventure, Ms. Powell discussed with committee members challenged by choice through the Project Adventure materials. She shared pictures and stories of success with Project Adventure program this year. The Academy of Health and Related Sciences, Mr. Banyan and Ms. Powell discussed with committee members the expansion of the district academy of health science careers. Students are duly enrolled in our district with Rutgers University. Mr. Banyan also discussed with us the interview and selection process for students who are interested in the Academy of Health and Related Sciences. Robotics. Mr. Banyan presented information related to the implementation of a robotics club at the Nutley High School. He discussed selection and participation of students and suggested the robotics become a co-curricular activity, which students have the opportunity to plan, design and build as part of their four courses before the club members have the opportunity to compete. There's actually more and I cut some stuff out later on. Summer reading program is one of my favorites. Ms. Benavides discussed with committee members the 2016 summer reading program as it relates to student choice. She explained that students and their parents are provided with the student's reading level and suggested readings. Students are encouraged to read within their level, but also can explore books of interest. At the high school level, students are asked to read one fiction, one nonfiction. And she also shared with us her work representing us in the Nutley Public Library, including a book wizard app. I also encourage all adults, a few of us in the room, to make sure you pick your, at least two books this summer to read. Textbook purchases. Dr. Vellani reviewed information with committee members related to the purchase of updated editions of current textbooks. That's also on the agenda. Translation of ESL correspondence. Dr. Vellani reviewed with the committee members state law related to dissemination of information to families of ESL students. Select communications must be provided in the student's home language. Resolution is on the agenda tonight to approve transportation for the translation of the necessary letters. 2016 and 2017 high school program of studies. Dr. Vellani and committee members discussed minor updates to the high school program of studies which provide clarification on calculation of final grades for full year, pre-quarter year and half year courses. Resolution is on the agenda tonight. Upcoming academic presentations. Dr. Vellani shared with committee members an updated calendar of academic committee presentations of 2016 to ensure proper approvals for programs. We discussed some, Dr. Vellani discussed with us some additional professional development opportunities. We, of course, went through our normal out-of-state and overnight field trips and professional days. And Dr. Vellani, I saved my comments to now for you because you were one of my quickest friends in the district when I got on board. I think you and I both appreciate attention to detail. We try to map out and try to think 10 steps ahead of ourselves. Proofreading is one of our favorite things to do. Reading, one of the best summer reading suggestions I know. I'd like to thank you for your hard work, your diligent attention to detail, your forward thinking and vision, mapping out presentations each month in order to keep us fully informed so that we can make thought-out, well-reasoned decisions to the betterment of all of our students in the district. And I want to sincerely thank you for your dedication to the district. That's my very own sorry word.
Thank you. Mr. Scholler.
First, I'd like to go on record, I beat up my committee here, minutes, this is probably the record, so it needs to be written down. I'd be on record for that though.
She was...
I'm just...
She was a lot younger before she left this district.
I'd like to return the question.
So...
Oh, wait, and then, all right, I also did want to thank, we had many of our educators and administrators that appeared for all the presentations. I think maybe one or two is here. And I want to thank them because they all have been wonderful at their presentations. They're making a lot of good effort.
So the administrative committee met on June 13th. I was myself, Mr. Cornesello and Ms. Russo and Mr. Lazman. Discussions, the action team presentation, communications, Mr. Williams, Mr. Benavides and Mrs. Doyle Moreno presented the year four work of the action team as well as the five-year goals. I think you're in the presentation today. But some of the great things are the newsletter now that comes out every year from the high school, the pictures and photos of what's going on. It's really a great bulletin. That's being rolled down into, looking to the grammar schools and the middle school for next year. I think it's a great way for the parents to get things, see what their kids are doing, updated. I think the communications committee is truly meeting their goals on many different times. The action team presented on configuration. Mr. Banyan, Mrs. Corolla, Mrs. Egan and Mrs. Vidiallo presented the year four work of the action as well. I'm really excited that we're looking at the block schedule going to 17 to 18. Farm met the strategic goals to be there by 17. We're going to be doing that. The work that's going on in the middle school project and that also into the, looking down into the grammar schools and how we can do that. Probably won't make the 17 year, but it gets on the road. So I was very excited for those two presentations. We reviewed all of the legal documents that you will find on tonight. We reviewed the personnel committee agenda that's also in your package here tonight. We reviewed proposed changes to existing job descriptions that are also on your board's agenda for tonight. We can review the agenda material for this evening. And committee reviewed the proposed policy regulations that are also on your agenda. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Scholler. Any other committee members? Hearing of citizens, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all of the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulation number 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes and you have to try to stay within this requirement. Speaker basically may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please bear in mind that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to only state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with missing the due. First person wishing to approach the board can do so now. Resolutions. Mr. Sherman, will you take academic resolutions, please?
Mr. President, I move academic resolutions 1 through 12.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bassano?
Yes.
Mr. Cornesello?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schalaer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Scholler, will you take finance resolutions, please? I'm sorry. Mr. Scholler, administration resolutions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. I'd like to move to administration's resolutions, 1 through 7, as written.
Thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Bassano?
Yes.
Mr. Cornesello?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton? Yes. Mr. Ferrara?
Yes, to 1 through 4 abstaining to 5 and yes to 6 and 7.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schalaer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman? Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Scholler, will you take finance resolution now, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I approve finance resolutions 1 through 56. As written, with the exception of the due bills and mandatory payments, removing check number 10220.
I need a second.
Second, second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bassano?
Yes.
Mr. Cornesello?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schalaer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Scholler, will you take personnel resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. Kaczynski, I'd like to move personnel resolutions 1 through 7.
What we're going to do this, folks, we're going to accept the resolutions, then we're going to read the testimonials individually. They've been assigned to everyone. At the end of the testimonial, we'll take one vote on all the testimonials. Okay, so... Need a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion. Mr. Scholler, take testimonial.
Whereas the following teachers have tendered their resignation and have signed their intention every time from active service. And whereas through the years they exemplified the finest qualities of the profession at all times. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education expresses its deep appreciation for their long and faithful service and extends its best wishes for continued health and happiness. Be it further resolved that the resolution may be made part of the minutes of this meeting. Monica Ryan, 30 years. Gail Wallace, 30 years. Almarado Chiquita, 26 and a half years. Janice Shone, 26 years. Carol Von Aken, 25 years. Kenneth Ferrell, 20 years. Gloria Dorfman, 19 years. And Karen Beckmeyer, 17 and a half years.
Thank you. Mr. Cornesello, will you take testimonial 3?
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas the following teachers have tendered their resignation, sorry, their resignation as guidance secretary and has signified her intention of retiring from active service. And whereas through the years they have exemplified the finest qualities of the secretary position at all times. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education expresses its deep appreciation for their long and faithful service and extends its best wishes for continued health and happiness. And be it further resolved that this resolution may be made part of the minutes of this meeting. Willis Batalia and Joanne Luzzi.
Thank you. Mr. Scholler, ask more of the board, please.
Whereas Mrs. Donna Luzzi has tendered her resignation as a proud professional and has signified her intention of retiring from active service. And whereas Mrs. Luzzi has worked in the Nutley Public Schools for a period of 30 years. And whereas through the years Mrs. Luzzi has exemplified the finest qualities of a proud professional position at all times. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mrs. Luzzi its deep appreciation for her long and faithful service and extends to her its best wishes for continued health and happiness. And be it further resolved that this resolution may be made part of the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Pritchett.
Yes, thank you. Whereas Mrs. Ruth Moreno has tendered her resignation as bus driver effective January 1st, 2016 and signified her intention of retiring from active service. And whereas Mrs. Moreno has worked in the Nutley Public Schools for a period of 28 years. And whereas through the years Mrs. Moreno has exemplified the finest qualities of the driver position at all times. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mrs. Moreno its deep appreciation for her long and faithful service and extends to her its best wishes for continued health and happiness. And be it further resolved that this resolution be made part of the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Sherman, testimonial 6, please.
Whereas Mrs. Donna Coco has tendered her resignation as guidance counselor and has signified her intentions of retiring from active service. And whereas Mrs. Coco has worked in the Nutley Public Schools for a period of 18 years. And whereas through the years Mrs. Coco has exemplified the finest qualities of qualities of the guidance counselor position at all times. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mrs. Coco its deep appreciation for her long and faithful service and extends to her its best wishes for continued health and happiness. And be it further resolved that this resolution be made part of the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Mr. Scholler, Mr. Scholler, 7, please.
Whereas Mr. Michael Fangli has tendered his resignation as a field technician and has signified his intention of retiring from active service. And whereas Mr. Foglio has worked in the Nutley Public Schools for a period of 11 years. And whereas through their years, Mr. Foglio has exemplified the finest qualities of a field technician position at all times. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mr. Foglio its deep appreciation for her long and faithful service and extends to him its best wishes for continued health and happiness. And be it further resolved that this resolution may be made part of the minutes.
Thank you. Do I need a second on all those testimonials now, Mr. Scholler? No.
No, we'll just do, we're going to take roll call. Mr. Bassano?
I'm sorry. Just have a question.
Sure.
Are we doing anything as far as putting them on, you know, district lead head and sending it to them? Are you trying to reach the retiring?
I am sending them letters. I don't know, did we make the resolutions? Because we can't send them to...
Yeah, can we, it's something I, if we could do a formal resolution for each of the individuals and send them...
That's, that's...
I thought we did do that.
No, we did.
I sent them a letter.
The superintendent sends them a letter, but we can start the president approving a copy of the resolution.
I'd like to go up to the discussion.
That's a good idea. I don't think there's any problem with it, with the board?
Nice gesture, nice thing.
Nice idea. We'll send them a copy of the resolution and the, under the superintendent's letter. We'd like you to send them a copy, we'd like to send...
No, no, wait, I just... Like the certifier resolution.
Oh, okay.
The resolution.
And that'll be our standing moving forward.
Yeah.
Okay, still need a roll, still need a roll call.
Mr. Bassano?
Yes.
Mr. Cornesello?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schalaer?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Scholler, do you have something to say about personnel?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge that when we approved the agenda tonight that Mr. Pritchett, sitting here next to Dr. Pleasure tonight, is our new appointed vice principal of Nutley High School. And I just, I just want to say a few couple words. So I said it in the back room, but if you were to know him, what he's done with the world language program, how he gets along with people, how he works, what he's done there. We all respect great things in that position and support him, especially Mr. Williams from over at the principal's office. Thank you.
Yes, sir, as a board, we appreciate you moving forward. I know our new superintendent is working forward to working with you and the rest of the staff. Welcome aboard. Thank you for your work to this point. Hearing of citizens, in this section we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes and you have to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. And I'm wishing to address the board at this time. Go up to the microphone. Any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters in depth and we will be discussing them in the ASA report call. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recessed the closing session at this time to discuss student matters and property acquisition. Be it further resolved that the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of the subsequent meeting of the Board of Education for whether the reason for discussing such matters in close session will exist.
Second.
Second, as a favor, thank you.